Emergency, we have to. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to continue handle our city council meeting much different than we usually do. For the safety of the public and safety of the staff. Now I would like to ask the city manager to give us a brief explanation to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference video conference in compliance with the state and county stay at home orders and as allowed by the governor's executive order in 29-20, which allows for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see council members and city staff who are appearing by way of remote video or telephone connections. City council meetings will be held by teleconference or video conference only until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents may submit written comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org. That's P U B C O M at cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. Any written comments that were received will be read out loud during the city council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda item, subject to the customary five-minute timeline. We will try to check the email for additional public comments during the meeting if feasible. We are also trying a new format that allows the public to provide live public comment using the Zoom webinar feature. Members of the public may use the link to enter webinar, the webinar as attendees. They should also be able to raise their hand using the raise your hand option in Zoom to let us know if they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment. We request, as we do at typical in-person city council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called on to and their line is unmuted. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their mind and do not wish to speak. If you do not see these features in the Zoom module you are using, it may be that your software is not up to date or because of another technical issue on the user's end. There will be an opportunity after the staff report or each staff report for the public to provide public comment on the particular agenda item. Again, attendees attending via the webinar, Zoom webinar feature will see the raise your hand option to make comments after staff reports. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Call the meeting to order. Tina, may I have a real call please?
Ms. Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Please rise for the silent player and flag salute. Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tina, may I have a replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, July 24th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, July 25th at 9:00 a.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Tina. Next-gen item B, council, any approval, addition, and deletion. And I would like, I would like to pull, I would like to bring H4 after H1. This is a request of my staff and I also, some of the council member requested on agenda item H4, if we can move it to the next because the, it was a long item, there are a lot of pages. I would like to everybody on that given a comment.
I have a comment. If the item is just to prove to accept it, I don't have a problem, but I, I've only been able to read about a quarter of it and I just got it on Friday, so it's not very many days really kind of dive into it. So I, I don't know how everybody else feels about it. I'd like to have more time to kind of look through it before we, just in case, have any questions or concerns, but I don't know.
Anybody else? Any comment or?
I'm not sure I understand exactly what you're asking for, Mayor.
We like, I believe we're asking for item number H4 to cable to the next meeting. The reported.
I don't necessarily have, well, I said I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I mean, I've read through it. I understand it. I would ask staff, is there any issue if this has postponed an additional meeting?
Yeah, that's why I'm asking Tom, if Tom is okay to or?
We, I think we have the auditors online tonight. Is that going to be an issue, Claire, that you're aware of if we move it to the next meeting?
I'm getting a message from our auditors that that's not a problem. If you would like to move it to another meeting, he is online and available to speak on this item if you would like to hear it tonight.
You are accepting and filing the, the caffer.
We are.
Yes, that's the action is to accept and file it.
Correct.
And we are, are we a little bit late on that already?
We have asked for an extension from the state and they have been notified that you're looking at it tonight for acceptance. We are submitting, some of the reports have already been submitted, but this caffer is being submitted after your acceptance.
My only concern, I don't have a, I just, I just got it on Friday and I just, me, I'm always leery of, you know, just voting to accept something, meaning to accept it means that I've, I've looked it over and I approve of it and I, I barely read any of it. I mean, I only got it three days ago, so, or four days ago. It's a 150-page financial document, which, you know, I mean, I know we've been waiting a long time on this. I get it. So I mean, I'm just kind of on the fence. I would prefer if we could wait, but if it's going to be a huge inconvenience for people that we have online or whatever, then I mean, I can always bring my questions. If I have any questions, I can bring back next meeting. I know you're going to do a presentation tonight, Claire, so that's just my initial feeling. I just wish I would have had more time to, you know, go through it. But I don't want to, I don't want to make a.
So Sean, can you give you, can you give you a suggestion? Are just moving on that agenda because the expert is already on the line? If we have a question, we can go back to, to ask this day.
Not sure where you're, Mr. Mayor.
So if everybody, you know, let's go move that item tonight. If everybody, Sean, is okay for you? Okay, so then I'm going to move that agenda item four after H1. So because staff asked if we can move that agenda earlier, somebody had to go another meeting.
Hey, Mayor, how about if we listen to the presentation? Are you asking us to totally take it off the agenda or can we listen?
No, no, no. As is, but moving that item earlier.
He's moving it up in the order of being heard.
Well, the staff asked me, somebody have a meeting, so I don't think so anybody have it, any problem to move that agenda earlier.
I'd be, I'd be in favor of that, Mr. Mayor, moving the item to after H1.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Next-gen item is a presentation. There is no presentation. Tina, may I have a public comment, please?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and social distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute limitation. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via HTTPS, semi-colon, forward slash, forward slash, US02web.zoom.us forward slash J forward slash eight three nine five three three nine four nine four one, webinar ID eight three nine five three three nine four nine four one.
Thank you, Tina. Any public comment?
Yes, I will read the first public comment. This is.
Tina, do, did you send the public comment to all the council member?
I did.
Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
I don't see mine.
It's, they are sent and then I'll post it afterwards and resend it.
Thank you.
And this is from Lance Earl. I'd like the following comment to be read during the city council meeting on July 21st. I didn't see a form to fill out, so here is my comment. Good evening, council members. My name is Lance Earl. I'd like to take this public comment time to formally request an item be added to the agenda for the scheduled council meeting on August 4th. This request is on behalf of myself as well a group of several hundred Galt citizens. We comprise a new group movement and we call ourselves Wake Up Galt. Should this meeting be canceled or otherwise postponed, please add it to the agenda for the following rescheduled meeting. This agenda item will be in regards to two items we would like to discuss and present some requested changes to the Galt Police Department's current policy manual that the five minutes allowed for public comment would fall short of. The two items of question being, one, the, Carter, right, sorry, council hold, control hold PD policy manual section 305.4 and its current accepted use by our PD. Two deadly use of force review policy 302 and some additions and/or amendments we would like to see. I hope I can look forward to being able to present these items on the agenda for August 4th. The second one is from Randy Morton, Galt Fitness Pro. How is the city communicating with a residence and businesses about city development and in particular Corillian Boulevard and the proposed changes as well as Cedar Flats Estates? Has there been more than a few days' notice and are, are mailing going out to resident recently since city has been doing Zoom meetings? The people I hear from feel that they are left out of these decisions and feel that they have a right to ask questions. I understand this is a non, a non-agenda item. Can the council address specifically Rich and Tom? And then we have one more from Vinnie Neveras. Instead of spending money on the Corillian project, can we spend the funds on repairing the existing infrastructure like the roads which are in bad shape? That's all I have through PubCom.
So there is anybody on Zoom app?
Sorry about that. Currently, there is no hands raised.
All right, thank you. This public comment is not on agenda item, but any council member want any very quick response or otherwise I'm going to move on the next agenda item.
Is the Lance, Mr. Earl that sent the message in? I mean, that's something that we could discuss prior to the next meeting, Mr. Haglund, and, and if, if the, I mean, typically we would let someone like that come and do a discuss during, but you're expressing that they want to share some things that are outside of the five minutes. So is that something maybe we could, we can discuss after the meeting, before the next meeting? And then maybe you could reach out to Mr. Earl and see what we're able to do for him?
Sure, however the council desires that we approach that.
If I could just say a couple of things on that, and I don't want to belabor it because it isn't agendized, but I would, I would make the suggestion to Mr. Haglund to have staff reach out to Mr. Earl and get his ideas and then, you know, go through the appropriate process of, of agendizing it through the mayor and, and yourself.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I would agree with that as well.
So Tom, you can make, your staff can make effort to contact them and let's know.
No problem.
Excuse me, we have Lance, we have a public comment with the hand raised. Are we still taking public comments with raised hands?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and allow Lance to speak. Lance, you're in, go ahead and speak. Lance, can you hear me?
You have to take your.
Testing, one, two, three, can you hear me? Yeah. Awesome. Hey, thanks. Thanks for reading that. So yeah, whenever, it's just the, basically I have a little more discussion, I guess, to give to you guys. Something maybe we'd have to do some back and forth on, and I don't know. Like I said, this is kind of hard to do outside of the, or within a five-minute window. So I guess it's depends on the other format you guys would like to have it discussed in. Because this would be something that would probably, I don't know if it would fall in Mr. Haglund's purview and, and Chief Sockman and/or all of you council members as well. So I'm not sure what the exact best format to have this in.
Mr. Les, F, city manager, Mr. Haglund should contact you and make the plan how can work. And they can, he can contact us. Is it okay for you?
Okay. So basically I would get in touch with him and then he would bring it to you guys at the next council meeting and you guys would discuss it there.
Yes, he will make a plan next meeting or which meeting will be possible, but let's talk to him first and then go from there.
Yeah, well, I, I think what I was hearing from the council is for staff, perhaps the chief and I, clearly the chief and I, to meet with Mr. Earl and then identify and establish what it is, maybe see if those issues can be addressed and go through a typical process that would follow about ultimately agendizing that. Is that what I'm hearing from the council?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, well, then I look forward to, I believe the city clerk has my email, so forward to hearing from you, Mr. Haglund and, and, and/or chief any, anytime soon. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.. All right, another comment.
Do you have a, just hands like?
All right, then I'm going to move the next-gen item report by city council member on regional board. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, hey, I was here with something typing.
Yeah, somebody typing and it's, it gets rid.
Much better.
I have nothing to report.
All right, council member Campion.
I don't have anything to report this evening.
Councilmember Lamson.
Yes, we had our youth commission meeting via Zoom with the new Zoom members and we were able to meet with them and talk about possible projects for the upcoming year. Obviously, we won't be able to do a lot of the things that we've done in the past. Next meeting, we will be having officers selected. It was brought up that, and I have to bring this up with the city manager to see if we can still do it. They adopted Lincoln Way to Clean and we got a sign and we're supposed to pick up trash, I think, once or twice a quarter with social distancing and masks and gloves. Would we still be able to do that? So we have to figure out if we can still have a little adventure on that. Maybe not for a couple of weeks since we just got even more orders today, but that's something the youth commission wants to stay up on. And they're very excited. We still need some applicants for mentors. We're missing two have resigned. So we're looking for some people that have some time that would like to guide the youth out there. So make sure, I'm sure the applications are still online, Tina. Yes?
Yes.
That's all I have to report and I have an air quality board meeting, sorry, tomorrow. And all the fireworks that were set off over the state contributed to our poor air quality. So that's something I'll get more of a report on, the pollution. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer.
Just that I have a Sacramento County Library Authority meeting on Thursday and haven't had one in a while, so have that. And other than that, nothing else to report.
Thank you. On the regional board, we have a meeting last week on the Sacramento Transportation Authority. And we all know from last two year, Sacramento Transportation Authority, they tried to approve the major expenditure plan and tried to put that on the coming November on the ballot. On last May 14th, we did approve the ordinance STA 20001, and I also asked the Board of Supervisor to put that ordinance on, on the major vote so they can have half percent sale tax increase whole Sacramento County. And what happened last two month, they went for the FM3, that the research company to find out if they have a two-third vote on the Sacramento in approve into when that measure. And we all know that last two month, there is too many things happening, you know? And what happened at that research group, they came back and this, they said on this ballot, we don't have a two-third vote. So it's just a waste of money if we're going to go through that. And board and, and the staff decided to consider, to consider of reappeal the ordinance number STA 20001 and withdraw request to the Board of Supervisor to place the measure on the November ballot. And we did last, last week, and this was, you know, passed by more than two-third majority. So most of the board member, they were agree with that. And they also mentioned on that report is most likely effect was there was a three big factor in these days. The people does not want any tax increase. One is economic recovery. Second thing is COVID-19. We all know that the people lose the job and they don't have the money. The vision is also losing business. And third is social justice issue. So that was reason, that's what we have like in special meeting and that's the agenda item we approve. And nothing else. If anybody have a question or anything, then I will be happy to answer. If it's not, then I'm going to move the next-gen item.
Mr. Mayor, I just, a comment on the Transportation Authority ballot measure. I just want to thank you for your leadership, picking that ball up where I left off in December on that board and, and I think the board made the right decision in not placing that measure on the ballot this year, considering all the Corona, the COVID stuff. And, and I think you're right in that there wasn't, I don't think the countywide support for it. So appreciate that and look forward to any other discussions in the future, should that be an issue.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next-gen item F, information consent calendar. Tina, may, can you read that consent calendar, please?
Yes. Recommended actions, accept the minutes as submitted. Receive and file warrants for the period ending July 9th, 2020. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the existing contract with West Yost Associates in amount not to exceed 55,251 for the wastewater treatment plant special studies project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't recall you asking if any agenda item or consent items would be pulled. When you were talking about moving the earlier item, wasn't given an opportunity. I wanted to pull F3 for brief discussion.
F3?
Yes, please.
All right, council member. So I would like to approve the F1 and F2 on the consent calendar. And the motion?
I'll move that again.
A second. Who is going to move? Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Lozano, second by Councilmember Lamson. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Hi, Ms. Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye, motion passed by five to zero. The agenda item F3, subject wastewater treatment plant special study project. Amendment number one to test, order number four and master task order agreement with West Yost Associate. Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Mike, I just, these are probably questions that you could answer hopefully for me. I read through the, the staff report and I just had, so if I'm understanding this correctly, we currently have a contract with West Yost and Associates regarding work they provide us for the wastewater treatment plant. And they are requesting 30,000 and change additional on one particular task item, 35 on another, equates to some $40,000. I don't have the report in front of me, an additional. So I just, my questions specifically are, on page 22 of the agenda, it's actually page two of the actual staff reports, the letter to Mr. Ritchie and Public Works. It talks about, it says after significantly greater efforts in the TRE-related services, which is the toxicity reduction, for those that don't know what that acronym is. Costs have exceeded the original contract amount by 30,000 and change. So I want to ask a couple of questions. One, why I said significantly over? Two, it also goes on to say that they do not expect that there will be any additional significant expenses related to TRE through 2020. But then down lower in the last paragraph, it says that they're requesting an additional 3,500 for what they call potential needs related to TRE. So I just, a little conflicting there, they're saying they don't anticipate any further costs, but yet they're asking for a little extra money in case costs overrun. And, and overall, I just am concerned about, you know, why the significant increase on the. am concerned about, you know, why the significant increase on the first, on the, on that one particular task of thirty thousand dollars, if you could.
Sure. Yeah. In general, as I understand it, when the city entered this agreement, when the MPDES permit was issued back in two thousand fifteen for West Yost to provide the support, the additional studies and strategy evaluations for some of the things that the Water Board was asking of us. That various efforts through these last five years, some have been, you know, roughly what they had estimated and others have taken additional efforts. And so we've just, as long as we've been under the contract amount, we've had that flexibility to, you know, kind of vary based on, and again, a five year period, it's kind of hard to estimate what the costs might be kind of thing. And, and some of these things, you know, while they might have thought initially strategy A would, you know, probably be the, the likely path that we would take as they got into it. And, you know, based on, you know, some of the details, they had to resort to maybe, you know, strategy B or even C kind of thing. So just additional time and effort to do that. So that's kind of how, how this contract has worked as I've understood it. I know Mr. Clarkson is on the line too as an attendee. He might be able to get into some more specifics as far as, you know, asking about that additional thirty five hundred relative to the TRE. He can probably give you some specifics with regard to that. So Rose, I don't know if you can allow him to speak?
I did allow him to speak. Mark, you're available to speak now.
Hi there. This is Mark Clarkson. Hi, Mayor. How are you, City Council? Yeah, the one particular, just with the TRE, it's a toxicity reduction evaluation. Those, that is not an anticipated event. What happened is back in December, we failed our bio biologic assay that we do on our, that we're required to do. And the state requires us within fourteen days to submit a TRE program and to start the TRE evaluation immediately. They don't, they don't wait on it. So we didn't know how far this would go. And after, we have to do a series of sampling. I'm not going to get into details, but, but that was completely unanticipated of what we were going to need. And then back in and around April, the, the state said, okay, that's as far as you have to go. We've, you know, we showed that, that we did not have any toxicity in the plant. And that's when we put the numbers together and said, okay, this is what it's cost us extra. We did use some of the money that we had there from other accounts, which were, I mean, with other tasks that, that we believe were not going to be expended during the, during the remainder of this permit process. But we, we did have an, an overage. So it was, it was a completely unanticipated cost and you don't generally put this in a, in a five year project like that because you're hoping you don't have a toxic problem during your five year period.
Okay, so if, so if I was understanding it correct, I, I kind of got the gist of when I was reading it, that it was, that there was some cost built in for something like that, but it was like minimal levels or something. So what I'm getting at is unforeseen costs came up that were not something that was anticipated. You know, since, since the original estimates, which Mike, you said it were quite a while ago, I guess.
Correct.
And I get, it's like estimates are estimates. I mean, I, I'm a contractor myself. I get that, you know, you give an estimate. I, I know that a lot of this is, you know, you guys, this is your wheelhouse. I know Mark is probably the, you know, very, he's probably the expert in this, out of everyone on this right now. And so, and I'm not questioning any, any of, any of your guys' decisions. I just wanted to, it just kind of perked my, I because I just, when it comes to things like this where we, you know, when we get into, you know, contracts, you know, typically in, in other trades, I know wastewater can be different, but you know, you provide an estimate and then should the estimate be different, there can be change orders and things, but but typically I, I, what I struggle with is if it's something additional that popped up that wasn't foreseen, then that's totally expected. Or if it's like additional things that we request them to do, you know, hey, this wasn't in our original contract, could you please do this? Obviously, there's going to be additional costs. I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't items that there was specific estimates given for, and then they just said, oh, you know, we just didn't realize it was going to be that hard. And so there's going to be, you know, twice the money because I, I feel like that happens a lot nowadays and I feel like it's people's job if they're experts to use that expertise they have to bid appropriately, if that makes sense. So, so to be way off on an estimate and just say, oh, my bad, I didn't bid it correctly. You know, I don't take that as a legitimate excuse. I'm, I'm just using comparisons in other industries. So I'm just only stating that I just want to make sure that we don't always, you know, I want, as I as a council member, I'll want to send a clear message to anybody that we work with, whether it's a consultant or anybody who provides services that, you know, that we take estimates and, 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 and original bids very seriously and that, and that, and that we don't, we're not going to take, you know, overages that just come at us crazy, like we're just going to not take those lightly. We're going to, we're going to, you know, I'm going to look at those closely and make sure that they're, they're appropriate. So we don't see any abuse. And so that's all I'm saying. So I appreciate Mark, your, your comments and, and Mike for clarifying that. It does make sense to me now. So if anybody else had any comments, but that, that's all I had. Thank you.
No, appreciate that. And I can tell you that we scrutinize things too because as, you know, the guardians of the taxpayers' money, we aren't just, you know, saying, okay, you know, here's your blank check, you know, do what you gotta do. We look over what they're proposing and, and we scrutinize it as well. So.
Well, I appreciate that. And I, and I know wastewater, this wastewater, this is, this is not, you know, this is not somebody bidding, you know, uh, you know, an or something. This is, this is serious. You know, there's a lot of regulation involved. I get that. We want to make sure we're always compliant with the state. And I know your regulations also change over time too. So I get it and I understand it. I try to grab my hand around, my head around as much as I can. I appreciate you guys' insight and yours too, Mark. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anybody, any comment or any question? Prove the consent calendar F three. Do we have a motion out there?
I moved.
Motion by Farmer. Second by Councilmember Campion. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion carry five to zero. Next agenda item is schedule matter notice of public hearing. There is no schedule matter notice of public hearing. And next agenda H regular calendar, city council's office. Our planning commission appointment. Tina, I would like to ask you if you can read the staff report.
Sure. The recommended action is Mayor Sandu appoint Daniel Gurling to the Planning Commission to fill a vacant position with a term ending December two thousand twenty two. The Galt Municipal Code two point seven zero point zero five zero establishes the process by which a person is appointed to the Planning Commission. Each council member shall appoint one person whose term shall run concurrently with that of the council member so appointing. Due to the passing of LeAnn McFadden, Mayor Sandu has an appointment to a vacant seat on the Planning Commission. After reviewing past applications, Mayor Sandu has chosen Daniel Gurling to fill the vacant position.
Thank you. And all the council member, I appointed Dan Gurling to the planning mission. To the planning mission vacancy. And I believe he's the best qualified for that. He's a long time local residence. He have knowledge of long time businessman. He's also have a construction experience and all others. So I was believing he's the best qualified to do this job. If everybody agreed, then I will ask Tina to administer the oath of the office if he's on the phone.
Yes, Dan is available by phone. Dan, can you?
Yes, I'm here.
Daniel, I'm going to point you as a planning commissioner. And might be a couple of question. I already asked you, but if you can, why you want to become a planning commissioner and what you can do, because this can be a kind of public servant job. It's not that much paying money.
I look forward to trying to guide the city a little bit with my knowledge and help the other four commissioners along the way. I've lived here in Galt my whole life and I really look forward to what it's going to become in the future. And I really am looking forward to being a part of that.
Thank you. Tina, do you want to? You will top the office?
Yes. Hi, Dan.
Hi.
I, we can't see you, but please raise your right hand.
Okay.
Okay, and repeat after me. I instate your name.
I, Daniel Gurling.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And during such time.
And during such time.
As I am a member of the Galt Planning Commission.
As I am a member of the Galt Planning Commission.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of commission member.
Of a position of commission member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Sandu.
Thank you.
I, I look forward to serving the people of Galt.
Any council member, any public comment out there?
Congratulations, Dan. It's Kurt.
Thank you. Thank you, Kurt.
Congratulations, Dan. I know you'll make logical and informed decisions.
Thank you, Councilman Pass Lamson.
Congratulations, Dan. We look forward to you serving.
Thank you, Rich, or Councilman Lozano.
All right, we can move to the next agenda item. The next agenda item is H four, that's an item staff has asked us to move that finance department.
Okay, I am going to let in the auditors as well as Michelle and Matt Moore.
Good evening, Council. Mayor, as you know, LSL is your independent auditors for our financials for the entire city. They have been working diligently on this audit report. As you know, there have been several interruptions throughout the last year that have delayed this, but we are happy to present it tonight. Brandon Young is partner at LSL and he will be presenting this item for your acceptance.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Does everybody hear me okay? Sounds good. So as part of your packet, I believe there are actually six attachments tonight. So it's, it's pretty lengthy. So I'll try and go in order of the attachment so you can follow along. And then I think I'll go through all the attachments. Then at the end, I'll try and answer any questions that you guys have. So we'll try and follow that. So as Claire mentioned, I'm Brandon Young, a partner with LSL CPAs out of our Sacramento office. This is our, I believe, second or third year working with the city. I'm actually losing track of time, but let's go a second. So this year we started our audit back in May. Did our interim procedures, a lot of work on the city processes surrounding financial reporting. How they process disbursements, how they process cash receipts, how they track capital asset activity, how they track grant activity, things of that sort. Basically, the controls they have in those areas to ensure that any errors or suspicious activity would be caught. So we did that in May. During the summer, we came back to the office. So we do our planning and our risk assessment and we came back out in October. We were moving along at a fairly regular pace. And then in December, the city had a ransomware attack, which I'm sure everybody in this meeting is well aware of. That set us back for about, I would say, three to four months where that was the sole focus of the city, completely understandably. And then we were trying to get back on track. COVID hit and everybody was forced to work remotely unexpectedly. So it's we've had, we've dealt with just about everything you could possibly expect this year and actually didn't expect any of it. So, but we made it through. We're here and all in all, it went well. The city was, you know, very forthcoming with what they were dealing with and trying to, trying to overcome. I think we worked really well together as a team to get to this point and we're working forward to get back on a, some sort of regular track. So the first item in the, the first attachment is going to be the CAFER itself. So what I'll point on, touch on in the CAFER is the opinion letter, which if you're following the page numbers, it's, it's going to be page one. It's called Independent Auditors Report. If you have a second to get there. All right. So what this is, this is the opinion on the city's financial statements. This is the key letter for the audit. The opinion in here is an unmodified opinion. That's the highest opinion you can receive. That's the opinion that you want, meaning that the numbers you see in this document have been supported, tested, substantiated with audit evidence that we have looked at and nothing, nothing in here is materially misleading or inaccurate and the numbers have been verified. So a couple of things I'll point out in the letter. On the second page, it talks about the required supplementary information, which for you guys is primarily the pension and OPEV schedules that are in the back of the document. What this, this paragraph is telling you is that the required supplementary information, the, the pension and OPEV liability and related numbers are calculated by actuaries using a lot of different assumptions. Discount rates, investment rate of returns, mortality rates, date of birth, date of hire, things of that nature that go into calculating those liabilities. We evaluate all those factors and make sure the numbers are calculated correctly, but they're actually calculated by actuaries. That, those numbers swing very much so each year that from, from a lot of factors that are totally out of control of the city. I actually watched a webinar this morning that I think CalPERS investment return was between four and five percent this year, which means that two years from now, you're going to see the pension liability go up again because they, they fell short of their goal of seven percent. The four percent, to be honest, four and a half percent was a miracle considering that I think in March they were in the negative. So that actually is a positive, but basically those numbers change from a lot of different factors that, that auditors don't calculate, actuaries calculate them. So I just wanted to, to point that out. Um, the next item in the, I won't go through any of the specific numbers. There's, there's questions on specifics of the CAFER. I can answer them at the end or as Mr. Farmer, you mentioned, I'm happy to take them over email if you want to read through it more. No problem at all. So the second.
Mr. Young, can you clarify which page you're on?
Yeah. So that was the opinion letter. I'm actually trying to go to the next next attachment in the report, which is, I believe, the single audit. I don't know if you're, if your attachments have page numbers. I think it's just six attachments that are kind of back to back to back.
Well, I'm looking at my paper copies right now. I don't know, Claire, if you could point me on the right one. There's four different documents that are from LSL and that are outside of the CAFER binder. Or are we looking at the staff report on the PDF?
So Brandon began with the large CAFER report and he's now moving on to the one called single audit. So it is probably about the one, two, three, fourth item in. And it says City of Galt, single audit report.
In the binder?
No, not in the binder. Separate handout staple together.
Yeah.
To answer your question, it's from, I'm, I'm following along and a PDF copy she sent me. So I'm just scrolling through in the order of that. I don't know if you have that one.
Well, my handouts are all random. So they're just, you know, I have a stack of papers and they're all like, there's like five, four different handouts stapled together. I'm just trying to figure out which handout we're in.
It's, it's a single audit on it. Right about the middle of the page.
Maybe I could help, Sean. It's the, it's the, it's the loose leaf. It's about seven pages and it says City of Galt, California, right in the middle on the front page. And then next to it in smaller font is single audit report. Just go, go ahead. Go on. I want to hold it up. I'll find it, but I'm not seeing what you're talking about. So.
Yep. So the, the next document is the Single Audit Report. What a Single Audit is, is it's an audit of compliance of federal funding, any, any local government or government agency that receives over $750,000 in any given year from, that passes from the federal government is required to have a Single Audit. It's a compliance audit. Meaning that we are verifying for the major programs that are selected, that the money you are getting from the federal government is spent in accordance with the compliance requirements for that specific grant. So for the Single Audit this year, the major program that was tested, there were two. It was the CDVG program, and then the Highway Planning and Construction Cluster. Those are typically the two programs that the city has had tested for a few years now. It's the primary funding sources. So the letters in this report on, if you're looking at the Single Audit Report, the, I guess, page one, the letters Independent Auditors Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting is what it's titled. This letter you'll see is a duplicate later in the packet. It's required to be in two places. This letter is issued with the CAFER as well as a Single Audit. Under government auditing standards, we are, as I mentioned previously, we're required to evaluate internal controls and issue this letter. And letting you know if there's anything that came up that we felt needed to be basically disclosed, adjusted, or corrected, or the city's processes need to be improved. So as you'll see in the letter, it, it references you to a schedule of findings and question costs. So apologies for jumping around. It's easier in person, but we'll just, we'll get through it. So the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs in this report is going to start on page nine in the Single Audit Report. It says Schedule of Findings and Question Costs at the top. So you'll see the, the top says Section Two Financial Statement Findings. So there are four findings in this letter. I won't go through each one in detail for the sake of time. If you have questions after, I'm happy to answer them. So there were three that were considered material weaknesses. One, that was significant deficiency. They had to do with areas for simply accruing invoices. The timing of when revenue was received for some grant funding. The timing of bank reconciliations being performed and an adjustment for franchise tax revenue. These are all things that I think there's a variety of reasons why these occurred. I think the chaos of this year, and I think trying to get ready for the audit, these are things that I know we spoke with Claire and her team about that they know they want to do before the auditors come out, that they have just been behind trying to catch up. So I, I would expect these to fall off in the future, and I know that they're working diligently to get caught up and get reconciled, but these are just a result of tests we performed this year where we found some errors that needed to be corrected. The second letter, so now I'm going to go, going backwards in this report. The second letter in this report is called the Independent Auditors Report on Compliance for Each Major Program. It's going to be page three of the Single Audit Report. This is a letter that is specific to those, those grant programs that we tested. If there were, if there was anything that we tested where there was any non-compliance or issues that we found, it would be disclosed in here. This letter is standard audit language. There was no single audit findings that we came across, meaning that the money that the city spent from CDVG and highway planning by our standards and what we tested was spent in accordance with all the agreements and uniform guidance departments. So this is a, a standard audit language letter. So that is everything in the Single Audit that I wanted to touch on. So I'm going to go to the next attachment, which I'm actually going to skip because it's a duplicate. You'll see, again, it's Independent Auditors Report on Internal Control, which is also issued separately. So we already touched on that one in the Single Audit Report. So I'm going to go to the next one, which is going to be Independent Accountants Report on Agreed Upon Procedures Applied to Appropriations Limit Worksheets. It's a really small report. It's only two pages, three pages long. This report is actually typically, typically done during the interim procedures. It is simply recalculating your appropriations limit that you approve every year typically as part of the budget process and verifying that it was calculated correctly. All of the state factors for population changes and changing per capita income are used properly, the proper, it's, it's all calculated correctly on page three. So we verify that and make sure there were no errors. There were not any errors that we noted this year. So this letter is the simple, simple letter, not much, not much to it. The next one in the packet is going to be the Independent Auditors Report on Compliance with AB 3773 for the city. This one is specific to the City of Galt. What this test is in this letter is we perform a compliance audit, testing transactions specific to the Parks and Recreation Fund. Verifying that the money made from Parks and Recreation activity is reported in that fund, and that the expenditures in that fund are specific to Parks and Rec activity in accordance with the Assembly Bill. So we, we sample transactions, we sample payroll transactions, we verify the cost allocation for the transfer from the general fund, and we sample other transactions in the fund every year and make sure that they are being spent for Parks and Rec activities. This year, again, same as last year, we didn't have any expenditures that appeared to be out of compliance. So the documents we tested and sampled, the city is in compliance with AB 3773. I think we're on our last one. So the last one doesn't have a title. It's, it's the letter that is addressed to mayor and members of the council. It's called the Audit Communication Letter. It just starts with a date, and then you'll see a section that says Significant Audit Findings as the first kind of pull header. I'll give you guys a second to find it. I'm seeing head nods, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume you got it. I'm gonna keep going. So now, so this is, I like to call it a summary letter. These are required communications to city council as we, we work for you, we, we report to you. This is a summary of the audit and anything that came up that we need to disclose. So the, the, the key item on this first page is something I already touched on, telling, talking about the management's estimates as the intended paragraph. It's, it's, it's reiterating what I told you, that the net pension liability and the net other post-employment benefit liability are estimates. They change year to year. They're evaluated. But it's, it's a number that is predicted that you have to pay over the course of 30 years. So it's, it's not a made up number. It's a real number, but it's, it's not something you have to pay tomorrow, and it go up or down kind of every day, to be honest with you. So that's, that's what that's telling you. While the other paragraphs reference that there were any difficulties being encountered with staff, if we had any disagreements where we couldn't agree on how to record a transaction, if they consulted other accountants because they didn't, they basically didn't like what we were telling them, or if there were any other issues we wanted to mention. There were nothing, nothing that came up. I, I, that rarely happens. So this is kind of the, the second page is just standard language that you'll see in, in the letter. And then the third page, it talks about new accounting pronouncements. The, the key item is that they basically delayed every accounting pronouncement now for another year due to COVID. So the one that was going to come up that impacts really every government, it was going to have to do with leases. It was GASB 87, for anybody familiar. You probably don't want to know the number, but basically the leases that the city has have to be recorded a different way, and that was, that was going to start in fiscal year 2021. That now is going to be fiscal year 2022. So for the fiscal year 2020 audit, there's no new accounting pronouncements that would delay anybody. The only thing that is going to cause delays is the working environment that we're all in currently. So I think we're all rapidly trying to adapt to being remote for a foreseeable future. There's, seems like new state mandates every day. So I'm not planning on being able to go out there anytime soon. So we're kind of just trying to adjust and keep it as normal as possible. We are going to be performing the interim audit for the city for fiscal year 2020, actually, next week. So we're starting next year's audit already, so Claire really hasn't had a break for basically a year and a half. So she's probably just sick of us. So my staff have been incredibly helpful. They've worked very hard. It's been, it's been quite a year, and you guys have had to endure really even more than, than a lot of agencies have with the ransomware and having to kind of reboot your system. So I commend them for, you know, kind of sticking with us. We've had a lot of requests, a lot of update calls, a lot of meetings on. I know Claire and Matt are probably sick of pending items list, but we made it through. I think it's, it's going to make us stronger. I always, Jocelyn, while she's on the call, she'll laugh, but I think it builds adversity, it builds character. So thank you to all you guys for listening, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can, and I'm also happy to take questions over email, you know, the next couple of weeks, if you want to read the report more.
Any council member?
Mayor Sandu, I have a question.
Yeah, good advice, man.
Brandon, you said that our, the findings, what, what, let me ask, yeah, I almost made a statement. I have a question. What was the, what was the outcome of the audit, again, in terms of the level of assuredness that we have been doing things correctly? What is that called?
So the opinion is called an unmodified opinion.
And that's good.
That's good. That's what you want. Yeah. If you have a modified opinion, that means there are major issues and that there was an area of the city that we basically were unable to test or unable to verify the numbers. So an, an unmodified opinion is good.
Good. Okay. And, and I appreciate the, the letter regarding AB 3773 and, and the way that that was written in terms of, you know, the, the, the purpose of the letter and, and also the fact that, you know, it looks like we're doing everything, everything right as it relates to the law and expenditures and I just want to point out for the public, but that this is not a check every transaction kind of, of report, but it's more of a test model so that we can determine whether or not there are things that need to be changed. And, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate having that ahead of time. So thank you for, for your work. I want to thank Ms. Tyson and her staff for enduring this long process with everything that we've had to endure over the last couple of, several months, and appreciate all the work you put into it and and I, I don't have anything else right now, but I appreciate the, the report.
Thank you. Claire, I have a question. I want to see if you can little bit explain on the, on that report. It's an auditor and include full finding in the report. Can you just mention which one for finding? And can you a little bit explain each one of them?
Sorry, can, can you repeat that as what report you're referring to?
I'm referring to the staff report. They said the auditor and include full finding in the report of year ending June 202019. Three of these are considered material weakness, duplicate accounts, paper reconciliation, and unavailable revenue. I'd just like to be a little bit explaining about what, what was these findings?
Sure, I can, I can, I can give you some more info on those. So those are going to be in the, in your report. It's the, the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs that we, that we looked at. So they're, they're numbered. They're 2019, oh, oh, one through oh, oh, four. So the first one at a high level, basically, there was in, invoices that the city had to pay that needed to be accrued, that they were just accrued twice. They were duplicated. We noted it. It was corrected. And the city is going to review those invoices more closely, you know, before we come out moving forward. That was the first one.
And then the invoices, how many invoices they was duplicate? Is large or?
I believe it was, it was two, and for, it was for a total of $93,480. And they were caught, and they were, they were reversed and corrected. So.
Right.
The, the second one, so without getting too much in the weeds of what unavailable revenue is, for, for governmental accounting, there are, there's a certain timing of when you have to record and recognize your revenue. And a lot of times, there are estimates involved as to when you, for example, the Highway Planning Program is a perfect example. That money is reimbursed usually through Caltrans, and you are a lot of times estimating how much you're going to get reimbursed. And sometimes it's not what you expect it to be, but you have to kind of plan ahead. So in summary, what happened is that back in 2018, there was, they, the city had estimated that they were going to receive $70,000, $72,000 more than they did, which basically led to a, a misstatement this year. It was specific to the Safe Routes to School Grant. So that, that number basically needed to be removed from the books, and it just resulted in another journal entry and an adjustment. I don't know if Claire, if I explained that in an easy way, but.
Yes, that's fairly accurate. The, the the, the recording was corrected, the, the entry was corrected, but it was after the audit was already begun. And so it became a finding for us. So the financial statements are correct.
Thank you. The third one has to do with a, an adjustment for the city's franchise tax revenue. This one, from what I recall, is there was money received after the year closed that needed to be accrued back that related to fiscal year 19. That just, by this, that when we came out for the audit, it just, it had not been accrued. So Claire, anything else to add on that one?
No, that's accurate.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then the last one was the one that was a significant deficiency having to do with the city's bank reconciliation procedures. This one is simply that, basically, the city has been the last kind of year and a half sort of playing catch up a little bit with their bank recs. Then best practices are that you have, if you have the bank rec for the month that just closed, usually done at the latest three months after, which is even that, is pretty late. Usually, county, state government code for counties, they say 30 days. So basically, for this month, when July closes, on July 30th or July 31st, they want July reconciled by the end of August. The city has not been able to do that, but they have caught up, and I think that they are, they are on track for fiscal year 2020 to get those up to speed and have them ready when we come out. So that, that was the, the last finding.
Thank you. And that's from me. And other council member?
In regards, yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. In regards to that last comment about the reconciling of what you say we're on track to, maybe Claire can answer. I mean, just ballpark. He, Mr. Young said we're on track to get caught up where we're falling within that 30-day reconciliation period. I mean, do you think we're, how, how far off from being on track to keep that? Do you think we are, Claire? A few more months, couple of months?
So, so, yeah, I can address that. So two years ago during the audit, we were significantly be, behind on those bank recs, and this was an audit finding last year. When the auditors came out for that audit, we were not caught up, which means we were not caught up with that year's audit, and we were behind on this audit that you're looking at. So once the audit from 2018 was complete, then those, but, those bank recs were reconciled. So by the time the auditors come in, they're looking at 12 months, and they're saying the first six months of the year are behind. So that's what caused this finding. By the time they arrived in, I think it was August, I can't remember when we started sending, you came out in October, but I think we started sending.
Probably August, September. Yeah.
Yeah. We had already completed the June of 2019. So we were caught up at the time that we ended the last fiscal year. Now, the ransomware attack did do havoc on that schedule. We were on time 30 days. We were reconciling until we got to the ransomware attack, and of course, systems went down. And so we did have to play some catch up on that. Currently, we're caught up again.
Okay, thank you for that.
I might point out that for some of this, remember, we're going back in time, and for, for, for some of what has been described, here Claire was not the financier.
And one last question I have, Mr. Young. On the letter regarding the compliance with the AB 3773, you know, the language, you have to read it several times. For someone who's not an accountant, it can be very just the verbiage used, you know, non-compliance type of compliance requirement, and you, you kind of have to go through it. But one thing kind of stands out to me, and I, and I think this is the letter that we got last time from you guys, the first time, or, or the first time you guys actually started doing our audits, and the first time we were presented with a letter like this, I believe it was last year. And in this particular paragraph is that we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control over compliance that we consider to be material weaknesses. However, material weaknesses may exist that have not been identified. So just explain briefly. I know you said earlier, you kind of take, you kind of take test things, you grab things out and test them to make sure they're compliant. So you're not looking at every single item. So is that, is that fall into what, what that paragraph is describing, or am I misunderstanding it?
Yeah, that, I mean, basically, what it's trying to say is that if every year is kind of, it's a sample of document, it's a sample of expenditures that we test. It's not every transaction. And also that the, the AB 3773 language is, is our, it's, it's not a long document. So it's, it's our, it's our interpretation of what the compliance requirements are tested against the documents that we sample, and our determination is if they're in compliance or not in the simplest way.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other council member have any question, any comment?
Other than I'm satisfied with the, with the documentation and what's been presented this evening.
The findings, the four findings that were identified, I I don't find significant it to the extent that, as Tom pointed out, that some of them predated Claire's employment. And in particular, given the circumstances that have occurred over the last year, the ransomware and COVID and staffing levels in general, I think. So I'm I'm very pleased to get a good job, Claire. Thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Ms. Lanson, anything?
Yeah, I know there's been some pressure to get this done. And Claire, just congratulate your staff and everyone because I know there's been some extra hours. I've seen some cars there late at night. So I really appreciate it. And there's nothing significant. And hopefully, we're done cleaning up some messes and we can go on from there, right? So congratulations. Thank you, everyone.
That's the plan. That car is probably Matt Boring, our accounting manager. He's been very attentive to completing this audit, along with Michelle Neely's assistants and staff.
Tina, any public comment out there?
No written public comment.
Rose, anybody on the Zoom web?
There are no hands raised on the attendee side.
Thank you. If there's no further comment, Tina, can you read that recommended action, please?
Except by motion, the City of Galt Comprehensive Annual Financial Report CAFR for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, single audit for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, memorandum on internal control and required communications for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, independent accountants' report on compliance with the Proposition one one one, two thousand eighteen dash nineteen, appropriations limit increment and independent auditors' report on compliance with applicable requirement and on internal control over compliance regarding AB three seven seven three.
Do we have a motion to approve that agenda item?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda item CAFR.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Lanson, and second by Councilmember Campion. Tina, may I have a rule call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion carry five to zero. Thank you.
Next agenda item H two, subject urgency ordinance to allow temporary outdoor dining use permit. Mr. Haglund.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce Amy Mendez, who is going to provide the report on this item. Amy is our manager.
I am.
I I wasn't sure. I thought we had a recusal on this one.
Yes, Mr. Farmer's on mute and he needs to recuse himself.
Yes, I'm aware of that. But before I do that, didn't we skip an item? We skipped item H one?
No, we made the planning committee appointment.
Yeah, we are done.
Oh. I that was messed up.
Sequence, you know, with that agenda item.
Yeah, that was that was when I was with off. So yes, I need to me just a second, sorry. Yeah, I need to recuse myself from participating in this item because I have an ownership interest in a local business downtown that would allow me to utilize the proposed temporary outdoor dining program. Based on this, I may have a conflict of interest and will recuse myself from the discussion of this item. While I would typically leave the room for this virtual meeting, I have been asked by city attorney to leave the room by turning off my mic, camera, and speakers. Mr. Haglund, if you could please notify me when the item is being discussed, and I will rejoin the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Again, as Tom mentioned, I'm Amy Mendez, the Economic Development Manager. The item before you this evening is related to the approval of an urgency ordinance for a temporary outdoor dining permit for local restaurants. As most of you know, the state and county have continued to issue amended public health orders resulting in the temporary closures of several businesses throughout the community. Most recently, the county issued a public health order requiring that dine-in restaurants must again close their seating to customers on the indoor of their restaurants. However, the order does allow dine-in restaurants to continue to utilize outdoor seating as long as they comply with the latest Department of Public Health COVID nineteen industry guidance for restaurants. Part of this guidance includes protocols for maintaining physical distance amongst customers in outdoor dining areas. For the most part, restaurants in Galt are limited in their capacity to provide for outdoor seating since their locations have not historically been configured to offer outdoor dining services. Although takeout and delivery service is still an option under the latest public health order, it leaves a rather large revenue source that restaurants are not able to capture. For both restaurants which have existing accommodations for outdoor dining as well as those that don't currently, they now face the additional constraint of complying with state mandated physical distancing requirements outdoors, ultimately reducing the number of tables available for customers. This really exacerbates the fiscal burden on restaurants who have already been significantly impacted by state and local health orders. In an effort to provide local restaurants with an option to allow for outdoor dining seating and increased revenue, staff is proposing an urgency ordinance for an emergency temporary outdoor dining permit, which will offer greater flexibility to expand customer seating into both privately and publicly owned outdoor areas. This could include expanded dining areas onto public sidewalks, into private parking lots and on-street parking places adjacent to a restaurant's physical location. These are also known as parklets in most areas. The goal of this urgency ordinance is to help existing Galt restaurants expand their physical space so they can be compliant with the state and county public health orders requiring physical distancing while also ensuring that the restaurants operate in a manner that's safe for the public. The ordinance, if approved this evening, offers a streamlined permitting process which requires approval of a temporary outdoor dining permit by the Community Development Director. The director would have the authority to grant the emergency temporary use permit as long as the restaurant operates in compliance with all applicable state and county public health orders. And it does not violate the Americans with Disabilities Act and does not operate in a manner hazardous to the public health. Normally, the cost of a temporary use permit would be two hundred and sixty seven dollars per application. This proposed ordinance provides that no fee would be charged to the applicants for the outdoor dining permit. The ordinance also allows the permit to be issued with conditions in the instance that further requirements are necessary than what's listed in the actual application. Nothing in the ordinance would allow for the waiver of any federal, state, or local laws. For instance, ABC requirements would still have to be adhered to. Additionally, any permittee would be expected to maintain the outdoor premises in a clean, sanitary, and safe condition. Once issued, the Community Development Director could revoke the permit if the permittee violates any of the conditions. If not revoked, the temporary outdoor dining permit would remain in full force and effect until thirty days after termination of the ordinance. The ordinance would terminate upon the termination of the city's declaration of emergency unless the city council decides to end it sooner. Included in your packet is a draft application for the temporary outdoor dining permit. Each applicant would be required to submit a depiction or drawing of some kind showing the proposed location and layout of the outdoor dining area, along with the application for review by Public Works and by Community Development. Additionally, the Customs Fire District would also possibly have to review depending on what kind of structures are being put out in the outdoors. The application includes all of the conditions that would need to be met in order to grant a temporary outdoor dining permit. For instance, sidewalk clearance, ADA access, fencing requirements, ABC approval, insurance, indemnification language, et cetera, is all included in the application. With that, we are recommending approval of a proposed urgency ordinance granting an emergency temporary outdoor dining permit to allow restaurants to use available public and private outdoor space to meet physical distancing distancing requirements and to adhere to the current public health order that's in place. With that, are there any questions that I can answer?
Thank you, Amy. The council member. First of all, that temporarily dining audience is usually is two hundred sixty seven dollar we charge. But when we're doing this, we're not going to charge anything, right?
Correct.
The second my question is layout. What kind of layout city going to set? Because yes, a simple layout or anything architect wise?
I think that it's really going to depend on the individual restaurants. And I'll let the Community Development Director chime in here if he needs to. But there needs to be certain separation. And for instance, if they're going to place tables outside on the sidewalk, there has to be four feet of clearance for ADA requirements. If there is going to be a tent that's put outside for coverage for shade, umbrellas, those would all have to be included with the diagram. So really, it's real really for the city to kind of make sure that the ADA requirements are met, the clearance is met, path of travel is there, that there is no additional. So each restaurant is going to have sort of a different layout that they have to adhere to based on the space that they have available.
Yes.
Kind of broke up. But I don't know if I can add to that. Amy, it really is going to depend on the locations. But what we typically like to see is a site plan showing where it is on the location they're going to put the outdoor dining, you know, the number of seats, tables, make sure it adheres to all those requirements that Amy had mentioned. In a normal process, we would typically require some design component to make sure it meets certain design criteria. However, because it's a temporary situation, we're willing to work with, you know, the restaurant owners to get something up quickly that can work and you know, they could start serving customers.
No, the same thing I'm asking because the normal procedures can be hard. So we, as a community development director, you know, we helping these, I know that there should be a minimum requirement, but normal requirement can be much harder for you know, the restaurant to meet.
Right. Well, I would always like to think it's pretty easy coming through us, but no, you're correct that sometimes it can be cumbersome, especially that when you span departments. So I think what this process does is it kind of connects the departments because it's not only community development, there is a component of Public Works where they are encroaching on the sidewalk or a parking area where then they typically would have to get an encroachment permit. And I know they work as quickly as they can. But when you start adding this stuff together, that it then does take time. So this process will help speed things up.
Thank you. Thank you. You bring that agenda to the council. I know the restaurant is hurting out there. So I'll bring that agenda. The council member.
Yes, I I have a question for staff. Under, can you envision under what circumstances public parking spaces would be utilized? And the only reason I ask that, I you have a little, I think I would have some concern about safety. You know, if it's that close to 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 a roadway. So I guess I I don't know if it's going to be on a case by case basis, but that I would have some concern there, given that probably a lack of barriers or our barriers or whatever.
Well, you're you're speaking the chief's language and you know, he's he's got a concern about those things as well. When we have had other, outside of this process, others approaches to go into parking lots or in parking spaces is a safety. So we will look at that on an individual basis and then, you know, make it a call accordingly. For example, prior to this ordinance, we did have a request to the parking lot where there wasn't quite, it didn't appear there were some safety measures. So we were asking if they put in something that could help provide that. And they weren't able to, so never ended up putting in the measure. So I think in this instance, we will look at it on a case by case basis. You do have a permanent outdoor dining area or I don't know if it's dining at the wine tasting room on fourth where they use some. And I think that's an example of where they were able to kind of put something a little bit more permanent to provide that protection. But in a temporary situation, there are some measures they can put that aren't so permanent to help provide somewhat of a buffer.
I think one of the areas that we had talked about primarily, this would be in the Old Town area. I would envision C Street, Fort Street area. Streetzlon was a restaurant that was really small indoor seating to begin with. And so I've had some communication with the owner there because with closing the dining room, that really, you know, limits the number of customers he can serve. And if he moves tables outdoors on the sidewalk, you can't serve large larger groups. And he still doesn't have the capacity to serve a large number of people. And so one of the ideas was potentially utilizing the parking in front, maybe one or two parking places in front of his restaurant. You have a bulb out there already where the alleyway is to sort of naturally block traffic. There would obviously need to be some additional measures taken on the kind of western side of the parking spaces. But that would be one instance, I think, that, you know, would be something to consider.
I was glad to see too that there's no notice and hearing procedures because that tends to really slow things down. So I think that's a benefit. That's all I have.
So I was downtown Lodi and there were some restaurants that had moved out, some coffee shops had moved out to the street. And they actually brought in those those barriers that we fill with water that we used to use for downtown. So maybe we can make that available to them if they pick them up and fill them up with water and so we could help them out. And just congratulations to staff for doing something to help our local businesses in town. I'm sure it's going to be well appreciated and well needed at this very strange time we're living through right now.
We've also.
That, you know, if Amy mentioned a little bit about the tents that they do, if they're doing large tents, they will require fire approval. But CSD Fire has created a program where they're waiving the fees for inspection and their applications for their process. So CSD is also been, you know, on top of this issue and really helping assist where needed.
The ABC has also put together some pretty simple forms that have to be completed to serve alcohol outdoors now. So that makes things a lot easier on a temporary basis for these businesses to move outdoors. So that's and most cities have started doing this just to really try to assist. We actually have an email into SHRA to see if there's a way for us to utilize CDBG funds potentially to help do like a grant match for furniture that needs to be purchased or umbrellas or shade structures or whatever it might be, fencing for temporary purposes if they're serving alcohol. So we're still, you know, pursuing it to determine whether or not there's a way for us to help finance it.
And I should add that we do have a a member of CSD Fire that's part that's on the the video conference, the video meeting. And if you have any questions of CSD, Amber Anderson is available.
Amber.
Yes.
Yes, Amber, this is Paul Sandu.
Hi, Paul.
Yeah, the only question, you know, I'm talking about when they're going to inspect through the CSD the temporary permit, you are not following the same standard like a normal standard, kind of some kind of levy on that, right?
The California Fire Code standards for tents and assembly occupancies, we are still following, trying to be as sensitive as we possibly can. However, the the location to the building, you know, the location to fire hydrants, fire access, those sorts of things, we're trying to be as lenient as we can possibly be. We can possibly be, so those things will be cited on a case by case basis during inspection. So we are also going to require height plan and some basic information and certificate of flame resistance and that sort of thing for tents. Um, so we can try to the issues early on. And we are taking um these uh permits, we're not charging any fees and we are. At the top of the list so that they are the first customer um upon submission.
So when somebody applying that application, this can be very proactive, right, to approve it?
Yes, so once they submit an application, uh we'll get to work on it the next business day, we'll work with the applicant and making sure we have all the necessary. Means to meet the fire code and then we'll issue a permit and then they'll call for a fire inspection and we'll go out and work with them on site as well.
Thank you, Amber. Any other council member, any question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do have a, a, a quick question. Actually, I have just a, a couple of comments first. Uh, I want to thank staff for proactively getting out and, and doing what we can to help our, our businesses of which many are struggling during this. This COVID nineteen time and, and uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's refreshing. Uh, quite honestly, Amy, to see uh this type of program move forward, so. We can, like I said, help our, help our local businesses do what they need to do to survive. I, I had one question about the public sidewalks. And I know you've kind of touched on it a little bit here and there, but how are we going to determine or, or what, what do we use as a matrix to determine? Uh, what kind of public sidewalk can be blocked um by, by those that are partaking in, in the restaurant business? And, and how it, it seems like it might be subjective rather than objective. Is there any thought on that?
Mike, I don't know if you want to touch on the ADA access and. Clear path that we need in terms of sidewalk.
Yeah, so Vice Mayor, to answer your question, uh essentially, we would have to adhere to ADA standards, so. Uh, I think the new standard now is forty eight inches, it used to be forty two inches clear path. So we would need to maintain a clear path of forty eight inches. And so we would work with, uh, you know, the restaurants uh to try to uh maintain that or look at other alternatives where they might be able to place seating as. As Amy said, you know, parklet possibility or something like that.
Okay, and, and, and I appreciate that, I, here's it just opinion of one here, and this would be my suggestion is. Where, you know, we may have business owners. Come to us with many, many different ideas about how they believe. Uh, this could be accomplished around their business and, and I would ask that um staff. Um, moving forward would be um have the mindset of saying yes rather than no initially. And uh figuring out a way to get to yes, uh because there may be. You know, we do this very well already, I just want to reiterate for the, for the community and the businesses that. We need to do what we can to this, make this work, and so uh I want to thank you all for that. And, and I appreciate the no fees, uh and I know that the consummate CSD is, is not. Uh, charging an initial inspection fee as well, and that, that I think will be a good partnership moving forward uh in this project, so. I just have one other comment for Acting Fire Marshal Amber Anderson. Hello, Amber, it's been a long time and uh, uh, thank you for working with the city on, on this issue and, and giving our businesses. Some additional uh income if we can, so thank you.
Thank you, Rich, it's my pleasure.
Thank you. Before we conclude, I have one more question, Chris. Uh, you know, the, the restaurant already have the outside dining, uh they already have the permit, right? Most of the.
So. Yeah, we, we would assume, we would assume they do and we're, you know, we have not.
And we're not policing to find out they have permits, not.
No, I mean, we, it's, it's not.
Thanks to the staff, uh you know, bring that agenda. And before we make a recommendation action, I'd like to tell the council, this action have to have four vote in order to prove urgency. If there is no question, I will ask Tina to uh read the recommended action, please.
And there's also no uh public comments, so. Adopt a way further reading of an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Galt, California by four fifth vote. Authorizing the Community Development Director to grant an emergency temporary outdoor dining use permit. To allow restaurants to use available public and private outdoor space to meet physical distancing requirements. And waiving any applicant fees associated with the city staff's review process.
I'd like to.
Uh, motion by Vice Mayor Lozano. Number. Uh, second by council member Campion. Tina, may I have your own card word, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Absolutely.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion pass with four to zero, thank you. Next agenda, I. Each, each five. Parks and Recreation Department, uh Mr. Solis.
Do I, do we skip H three?
Oh, yeah, sorry about that, uh, Mr. Slies, uh, I'm going to go back to item number H three. Coronavirus COVID nineteen update, Mr. Hagland, sorry about that, I skipped it.
You're on mute, Tom.
No problem, Mr. Mayor, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Today's update, uh, we're at tonight's meeting. As of this afternoon, Sacramento County was reporting a total COVID cases of seven thousand six hundred and eighty six, and it's. Nearly three thousand more than two weeks ago, uh ninety six deaths, which is up about twenty from two weeks ago. The City of Galt also uh shows a very steady increase in COVID infection. We're up to three hundred and seven this afternoon. We are, uh, I think, third behind um the City of Sacramento and the City of Elk Grove now. Uh, ahead of Folsom, Citrus Heights and Rancho Cordova. The significance there uh is that those are cities of eighty and ninety thousand uh as opposed to our twenty five thousand, twenty six thousand. Uh, San Joaquin County is also reporting very significant increases, they are at eighty seven hundred cases and ninety five deaths, yes.
Did you notify Sean?
Oh. Me, I didn't see.
I don't see him.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had my sound off on that, sorry about that. Watch for him to join here. Thank yous.
He's on now.
Okay. So the San Joaquin eighty seven hundred uh infected ninety five uh deaths, that's uh the, their. Count is uh, of deaths is up very significantly as well in just the last two weeks. Since our last meeting, San Joaquin County has received federal strike teams, these are medical strike teams. At at least two hospitals in an effort to assist and provide care to both hospitalized and. Intensive care unit admitted patients. Uh, as we know, over the last week or so, the governor has taken a series of actions related to COVID nineteen. These include requiring counties on the watch list, which include Sacramento and San Joaquin. To provide only distance learning for schools uh for uh the start of the fiscal year and until otherwise modified. Uh, by the state. The governor also provided guidance for some personal care establishments regarding how they are to conduct. Operations if they would like to reopen, how they're to conduct outdoor operations if they would like to reopen. Restaurants in at least thirty California counties continue to be closed to indoor dining. Uh, additionally, the governor closed all bars, brew pubs uh in those uh same counties. Restaurants may provide outdoor dining, subject of our uh ordinance tonight, but are mandated by law to separate tables by a minimum of six feet. Additionally, all employees in restaurants are mandated by law to follow the guidance for dine-in restaurants, which requires. Amongst other things, that restaurant employees wear masks and gloves and take other precautions in protection of public health. Every restaurant has an affirmative responsibility to follow those particular actions. The Galt Pool opened on July first, uh and uh we have had some use of that facility. Uh, the pool is operated under approved guidance from the Sacramento County Department of Public Health. In the first nineteen days of the month, month, uh attendance has fluctuated from as few as fourteen to uh as high as two hundred, or excuse me, one hundred and fifty two. We were informed today that the county, through the use of the National Guard. Will conduct pop-up testing uh of COVID or of patients for COVID nineteen at Walker Park. Tomorrow and Thursday beginning at eight AM. The county health officer asked the National Guard to focus on Galt. The testing is first come, first served and will provide testing for one hundred individuals. The Sacramento County Department of Public Health confirmed that this afternoon that the limitation to one hundred individuals both days. Is based on test kit availability. Again, the testing will be conducted at Walker Park on Wednesday and Thursday this week, beginning at eight AM. On a first come, first served basis. The city's Facebook page uh has a graphic from. Catawba County, North Carolina, and it's just interesting, and then so I wanted to take just a minute to point this out. That depicts this, this case study, that, or this graphic depicts a case study of community spread of COVID nineteen and. Just how easy and rapidly it spreads. The graphic shows how a single social gathering in which fourteen members of a family contracted the disease and. How it then spread to many other people they came in contact with over the following days. It shows how the disease is easily spread to uh forty one individuals, this is all uh ascertained by contact tracing. In that particular county from nine different families and eight different workplaces. The case study notes that prevention efforts are easy, but the county reflects that it finds it difficult to make calls to twenty, thirty or forty people a day. Telling them they have COVID, myself quarantine for fourteen days or until they get better, especially. When persons that they call do not have support systems that many of us take for granted. Such as paid sick leave, the ability to isolate in their own home or obtain caregivers for children. Um, and they just note uh on that graphic and that storyline that, that this all can be prevented. And that the power to do so is uh, you know, in our own hands, so that's the COVID update, we're doing uh what we can to uh. Uh, make sure that the, the city is showing leadership in terms of mask use and. Following the, the right types of. Uh, employee, employee workplace related protocols uh to uh help uh bring uh the, the, the rate of spread. Down in the City of Galt, uh at this point, we have one of, we have the highest positivity rate with the exception of Iolton. They have about fifteen or eighteen uh people infected, but their population is so significantly lower that. I think it gives a bit of a higher positivity rate, but uh other than that, we're the highest in the county. And uh so all of these efforts that I've highlighted today are uh an effort to. Uh, in, in focus to try to get the word out about preventing the spread. Uh, both in our workplaces and our business establishments, in what we do uh in the city. Uh, when we're meeting or uh providing services to the public, I'd be happy to answer any questions, councilman.
Any council member have any? Hagland, I have a question, you know, that's the, this thing they're going to do on that uh. Walker Park for tomorrow and day after tomorrow, right?
Yes, at eight AM uh both tomorrow and Thursday.
And the day testing, uh, is, is like in a city we requested or county just make it, you know, it's with the National Guard.
No, that, that's uh, happy to answer that question, so uh in my contact with the county this afternoon. This is what they call a pop-up event, and so they're focusing on areas where they, that are uh the so-called hotspot where there. Seems to be a continued uh, a large increase in the positivity rate. It's not so much the total number of infections, but your positivity rate, uh that's the underlying issue and Galt's is. Uh, Galt's a leader in that uh in, in Sacramento County. And so what I understand from the county officials is that the county health officer asked the National Guard. Uh, and with, with some time within the last a couple of days to conduct this pop-up event. And so they have been working to coordinate that.
Thank you. Any, any? Other question? Any public comment?
No public comment.
All right, uh, if you know, then we move to the next agenda item.
There are no public comments on the attendee signs.
Next end item H five, subject City of God's special events sponsorship application overview fiscal year twenty 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 one. Mister.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, uh, tonight we'll be talking about, uh, or actually making a decision on the special event sponsorship program. In two thousand seventeen, uh, the City of Galt created a special event sponsorship program. The goal of the policy is to allow staff to budget for these events, including determination of the source of funding. On June second, the Galt City Council approved a total of seven thousand dollars for this program. On July seventh, app applicants had the opportunity to address uh to city council and provided description of their event. Before I read off these um. The events, I want you to know that the, right before this meeting, Vet Trax has withdrawn their application. So please do not consider them when you are allocating this money. They were um, they had requested a five thousand dollar amount of in-kind, so please do not include that in your decision. Um, so the other remaining six events that we have and, and the total will be eight thousand six hundred dollars for those six events. Is the Chamber with their bridal show. Uh, the Chamber again with Extravaganza, Quanis Club of Galt for a five K run. Galt uh Sunrise Rotary, their community dinner, Liberty Ranch Athletic Boosters, a five K run. Uh, Liberty Ranch High School for their homecoming parade. As the council is aware, the city, county, state and nation are in the midst of a worldwide pandemic related to COVID nineteen. Accordingly, any of these, excuse me, accordingly, any of these.
Need somebody.
Should I continue or wait for the CM to come back? Continue, is that wait?
We'll continue.
Continue.
Okay. Um, so accordingly, um, any of these special events that are identified and approved, uh, will, will um. Proceed forward and fall under any county and state health restrictions that apply at the time. So. With that, um, we, the recommendation by staff is for you to review the special event sponsorship request for fiscal year. Uh, twenty twenty one and provide direction to staff regarding. regarding funding levels, if any, in accordance with the budgeted amounts in, in the fiscal twenty-one budget. And remember that amount is seven thousand dollars. Be glad to answer any questions. Rose, I don't know if anybody's on the line from any of these events. Okay, and they are not, they are not required to be.
Nobody on the attendee side currently.
I have a question, Mr. Solis.
I'm trying to pull the staff report up here, but I'm having trouble scrolling down to it.
What's the, so what is the grand total now with the Vet Trax five thousand dollar removed? That puts us at like, what is that, eight thousand five hundred they're asking for now?
Thousand six, eight thousand six hundred is what I calculated, but that was a quick calculation.
Seven thousand is what we have to allocate. Right?
Correct. So you'd have to trim sixteen hundred dollars from these requests.
Well, I, I've thought about this. I have, I want to throw an idea out there and everybody else can talk about their thoughts, but my idea on this would be, to be fair, I mean, first of all, I want to say, sorry to the guys who do the Vet Trax. I know you guys got to be really bummed. I know it's just too bad. We don't have the funds available like we did last year. You know, with budget and everything, I'm happy that we have something to help with. But I do appreciate you guys, you know, withdrawing and allowing other events that, that could possibly still go on with the amount of monies they're asking for. So basically, we have basically eighty-one percent of the money that's being asked for. So we have seven thousand to give out, eighty-six hundred being requested. My suggestion, we'd be keep it fair, this is my opinion, is I think we give all these events eighty-one percent of what they're asking. So they're all getting, you know, a proportion of what they're asking. Of course, some are getting more than others, but some are asking more than others. So I think that would be fair across the board. That gives everybody, you know, substantial amount to work with. We don't have to nitpick through them and pick out favorites or whatever. So that, that's just, I'm just throwing that out there right now. I'd love to hear what everybody else has to say.
I think that's fair. Sean, I think that's about the only, about the fairest way you could possibly do it.
I believe that's the fair bit, you know, everybody eighty-one percent, whatever they ask. So that's why we don't have to go through one with the other because some like in Chamber did they ask more money, but they also doing lot of events too. Me, is kind of your idea is fair. So move on then. Council member, any other council member?
Yeah, I am. I, I think that's a good way to go. You know, it's, I like, I'll tell you what I like about this list and I am bummed also about the Vet Stock Festival and the Vet Trax folks, because I know they work really hard at putting on their event, but the, the thing I like about the list this year, not as opposed to any other year, but I like the variety of different types of events. And so that are on here and, 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 you know, all are worthy organizations. But I think that providing eighty-one percent is awesome. I think that they would really appreciate the, the money and, and it'll go a long way for them. It's not necessarily what they ask for, but certainly will help. The one thing that I just wanted to ask the city manager real, is he back yet?
He's back.
Oh, there he is. So I have a question. I, I know in the staff report, it says that this, the, the, the money is going to be provided to the organizations and it's all going to hinge on whether or not the events are allowed to happen should, you know, when, when the time comes and based on state mandates and such. We have four events here that are to be determined and, and I would imagine that the Galt Sunrise Rotary pretty much knows what date the community dinner will probably be on, but the others I think are pretty, you know, flexible. Looking at the homecoming parade, that may even end up being in the spring. And so how can we, is there a process where we're going to try to help nail down some dates on the TBAs at least so that we have an idea of, because I suspect they'll look to us for guidance in terms of whether they can do the event or not.
Yeah. Go ahead, Armando.
So I, I, a lot of these TBAs are, are basically, they're trying to figure out where, what, exactly when they can do it. Obviously, the Sunrise Rotary, they do that in November, December. They really, the high school couldn't give us a date for homecoming because, as you know, those are tied to football games and fall sports has been pushed back all the way into January now. They're trying to leave flexibility in so they can make the decision of when they would have to do it. Hoping that answered your question.
Yes, it did, Armando, and I appreciate that. I, I think that, you know, in all fairness to not only the organizations, but also the city staff that may be having to help with these events, and I'm just going to throw one out. Well, it doesn't matter which one it is, but let's say police officers are needed. You know, it'd be nice to have us, give the chief enough time to, to, to prepare for that. And, and so that's my only concern is that we work with these groups as, you know, as we move forward and very similar to what we talked about earlier in, in an earlier earlier item on our agenda, but work at saying yes if we can. It's no, you know, see what we can do to get to yes, and maybe I'll offer some alternatives moving forward. Like I said, we have some really cool events that have been around for a long time, and then we have some really neat ones that, that look like they're, well, one of them fairly new. So, you know, this stuff is important to the community is what I'm saying, and whatever the city can do to help make sure that happens for them with the best guidance that we can provide, it would be, would be appreciated. And, and that's.
I think, you know, clearly, I, I, I agree with that. You know, one of the things that the Sunrise Rotary may think about, well, first of all, I think all, almost all of these events right now couldn't be held in the state of California based on the, the state health orders. So now you try to think of, well, is there a different way to achieve the same goal? And one of the thoughts is for the Sunrise Rotary, you know, what if you did a takeout type of, of thing? Would there be a way to, you know, be in the kitchen preparing the food, you know, where you're taking all the right precautions and things like that a restaurant would be required to do? And then can you have some sort of takeout operation that again would adhere to social distancing and provide all of those, you know, various takeout items that restaurants right now can do, right? I mean, they, they, they can do it if they follow the appropriate guidelines. And so with all the rest, certainly we can try to explore that. I wouldn't want to and in no way want to convey false hope that if the, some of these orders remain in effect, that some of the events are unlikely to take place in their current planned format.
And might I also add that they are also subject to our special events application process? So there's timing issues in those. We will do everything we can to make sure that these go off once approved. But they're still, they still have to fill out the application. They still have to abide by the timing of it for us to review their plans and those types of things also.
Yeah, and I appreciate the work you do and not that, not that you don't, haven't done this in the past or it's not part of what, but, but what you do really work at trying to work with these nonprofits and such. Because they do provide a huge part to our community and, and let's be honest, I mean, outside of or anything, I mean, when, no one's been able to really go out and do anything. And I can't imagine that the next, you know, year or two being a nonprofit where fundraising is at, at a minimal level and, and, and stuff like that. I think seven thousand dollars is all we can give this year, but it's really, really not a lot. And, and so hopefully doing whatever we can, like I said, I don't want to be a dead horse, but doing whatever we can to help them out would be, would be my preference.
Any other council member, any comment, any? Any public comment out there?
You know? Yes, I do have a public comment on the attendee side. I have Bonnie Rodriguez. Bonnie, go ahead and.
Can you hear me?
Thank you, Bonnie. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm, I'm calling on behalf of the Chamber and just wanted to kind of put it out there that although our bridal showcase is quite a bit different, that both the Sunrise Rotary and the Chamber do put on those two events, the community dinner and the Extravaganza is a completely free event. And that Extravaganza was actually initiated by the city. So it, the city and the Chamber together for shop local. So it, you know, we have just been, we just took the reins, you know, and ran with it because that's what the city at the time offered us to do. You know, like everyone else and the city included, and I recognize that, you know, the Chamber is facing financial difficulties as well. So hopefully we can work with staff to try to get that four thousand dollar cost down. But, you know, for these, really, these are the two only free, you know, for the entire community event. So I hate to put any obstacles in front of either one of them, other than the obvious obstacles that we're facing already. So hopefully we can work with staff to try to figure out how to get those costs down.
Sure, we'll do everything we can to work with them to do that.
Thank you, Ben. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just, she, I would just want to make a mention based on kind of her point too, yeah, that, yeah, I do understand that a couple of these events are fundraisers and so, you know, they're actually going to be raising funds, of course, for good causes, obviously. But their intention is to make some money, whereas we do have some events here that are not profitable events. They're only being put on for the community. So I still want to try to, you know, it's just hard to, you just want to help everybody. So I do think allocating the money that way is, is still what I'm favoring as the way I suggested, but, but I do, you know, the Extravaganza, we didn't have it this year. That is really one of the two, in my opinion, that and the IDC are the two biggest events that we have in the community for the public that are free. And it was tragic that we didn't have either one of those this year, but I look forward to having those next year. So, Tom, I know you mentioned, I know you, you probably may not be here that time next year, but, but I'm hoping that, that the council will remember this moment and, you know, and that our, our new management and staff will do whatever we can to try to work as best we can with, you know, organizations that didn't get all they were needing and to try to make these events still go off and not be jeopardized. So I just want to throw that out there. So I appreciate that gesture, Tom, of, you know, willingness to, to try to work with the Chamber on that. So that's much appreciated and it's a great event. So thank you.
Thank you. So any other, anybody on the Zoom there about any other public comment?
No, we have no additional hands raised at this time.
No public comment.
All right, Tina, could you read that recommended action?
Review the special event sponsorship request for fiscal year two thousand twenty twenty-one and provide direction to staff regarding the funding levels, if any, in accordance with budget amounts in the fiscal year twenty-one budget.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Yeah, so I moved to distribute the funds proportionally based on the amounts that are being asked for equally, if that makes sense, that verbiage.
That's the eighty-one percent to all.
It's like eighty-one.
Percent of what they're asking.
Motion moved by council member Farmer.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Lozano. We have a full call.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Council member Farmer.
Aye.
Council member Campion.
Aye.
Council member Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion carry five two zero. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, man. Move to the next agenda item. H six, Public Work Department. Guard landscaping and lighting district engineer report intention to levy and collect assessment for fiscal year twenty 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 twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening again, council. So in nineteen seventy-two, the state legislature passed the Landscape and Lighting Act, and that is the legislation that is the framework for establishing these landscape and lighting districts. And under that framework, the law requires that municipalities that form those districts, they have to annually state their intent to, to levy assessments on properties within those districts. And those assessments are for the benefits that those properties in those districts receive relative to landscaping improvements, streetlights, park tech improvements, those kinds of things. So basically, the way the process works, it's a two-step process. The first, and which we're at tonight, is to set a public hearing date for hearing any testimony to, with regards to those assessments. And then to, to hear a presentation on the engineers' reports essentially outlining the status of the districts financially, what their revenue level is and what their expenditure level is. The, again, the nature of the assessments and the range of the assessment based on the benefit received. So again, this is the first step in the process is to pass a resolution to and set a public hearing date for that. And, and if the council takes that first step tonight, the second step would be on the next council agenda on August fourth to hold those public hearings. The city has three lighting and landscape districts currently. Two were formed in the early nineties, nineteen ninety-two, I think. And the third one was formed in two thousand and five. So those are the three districts that we have. And, and what, what's before you tonight? I would also note that Mr. Bill Forrest, one of our senior engineers, is also on the line. And, and can, Bill, if you've got anything further to add to that, or you and I are both available to answer the question?
Not much more to add. The, of the three districts, the Northeast Galt and the West Side are, if you will, status quo. There we can't increase the assessments per prop to eighteen, and there were no annexations or partial splits. So the number stays the same from last year. LNL District number three does have a CPI inflator based upon an index. And so part of that is is that the, for district number three, the assessment is allowed to increase to two point nine percent.
Great, thanks, Bill. Again, we're available to answer any questions at this time.
Council members. Any council member, any?
Yes, I have a question.
Got you.
You're on mute, Councilmember Farmer.
You're on mute.
Thanks. Thank you. I just, I don't want to get into depth conversation with this. This has been talked about so much, but last few days, there's been a lot of discussion about the LNLs, the monies that are, you know, the, the landscaping has been talked about, you know, us coming back and landscaping and all that. Where's the money go and why? And so I've been trying to, you know, talk to people in the public and, and, you know, for, you know, which I've done over the last couple of years about the LNLs. So just, why don't you just give a really quick, brief, you know, east side, west side. This one's, you know, underwater, this one's underwater, this one is, you know, has a CPI like, um, something that's not new. It's something we, we build every year. And just, just to remind people, because people are just, there's been a lot of talk, people are kind of frustrated and don't understand. They think it's something that's new, they're not getting any money. I don't know. Could you just give me a quick little summary for the people that are watching, uh, Mike?
Sure, yeah, I can start and, and Bill can jump in, uh, with any further details. So essentially, the city has three districts and as you noted, Councilmember Farmer and Bill touched on. The first and largest is the Northeast Lighting and Landscape District, which is primarily on the northeast side of the city. That is the largest one. And that one is essentially, again, because these, uh, this one was one of the two, along with the West Side District, were formed in the early 90s. And at that time, uh, there was no escalator built in. As Bill noted, uh, District Number Three has an annual escalator tied to the Consumer Price Index. And so that way, that the revenues that are, the assessments that are, uh, you know, placed on these properties benefiting that are within the district, what they're paying every year gets adjusted. And so it keeps pace with inflation and therefore the district stays solvent. The northeast and the, and the west side districts were formed without that. And so every year, they fall a little bit behind, a few percentage points behind essentially. And so consequently, um, without redoing, doing a new effort on a district to build in an escalator like that, taking basically a new boat, if you will, uh, forming a new district. And, uh, and our city attorney may have, you know, some thoughts on that too, if I'm mistaken on this. But if absent that, uh, they just simply keep falling behind. And that's why you have to find other revenues to, um, supplement that, uh, that discrepancy. The Northeast District is about 100, and I think we're projecting 145,000 or so. That is going to need to be supplemented by the general fund or some other revenue source. Historically, it's been the general fund. And then the West Side District, uh, the, again, the, the second and I guess in both size and, and amount of, uh, you know, discrepancy is about 40, 42,000 and change, I believe. A shortfall of, so again, general fund or some other revenue would need to make up that cost difference. Other options would be to look at turning off lights or cutting back landscaping services, which you already mentioned, you know, has, you know, unfortunate, you know, uh, aesthetic impacts. So, so anyway, that's, that's where it's at. And I don't know if I covered everything you were looking for, but, uh, yeah, you were, thank you.
Like I said, just looking for, you know, there's still a lot of people that don't kind of understand that the gist of this. Basically, $200,000, we're collecting $200,000 roughly less than what the cost of service is. And so we have to put that money in from the general fund, which is the fund that, uh, we are in a budget. You know, we've been working really hard to try to balance the budget. So we had to make some choices. So for all you that are watching over here, this is what this is about. And so to learn more, I, I encourage you guys to come to these public hearings, uh, that are going to be upcoming, um, online, I suppose. And, um, to learn more or reach out to Public Works or your city manager, email, um, or myself. And we weren't happy to explain it a little more to you so you understand. So, um, you know, we're doing what we can with your money to try to do what we can where that money's going. And it's just thanks trying to stretch a penny into a dollar. So thank you, Mike, for that information. It's helpful.
Sure.
Any other council member want any comment, any question? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Sandu. Uh, you know, I appreciate this coming forward. And, uh, you know, we've had a lot going on the last year, uh, but there was a time where we talked quite a bit about, long-term, uh, but, uh, issues with the lighting bricks and, and, and Councilmember Farmer's right. I mean, it's a hundred, almost $200,000 a year, uh, that's going into, uh, from other funds that are going to pay for what we can keep going. You know, I, I, I can't, I, I like the analogy of explaining it, uh, in a way that, um, you know, we'd be like, it's like if you get a paycheck and never get a raise, um, but still have to put food on the table, still have to pay the house, house payment, still, you know, you're still having to pay for, you know, water utilities, electrical bills, all of that stuff. But the raise never come. And I think that's what you see in the west side and the northeast lighting and landscape districts. You know, we, I, I happen to live in the northeast lighting and landscape district. I pay nine, $99 a year to provide that, uh, for that service. And that's never going to, to move unless we do something more long-term with it. And so, uh, just think about it. Um, think about what, what that looks like. And, and I would argue that, at least in my experience, even with an SCL, a CPI escalator attached to a district, over time, that will erode away and will not be sustainable either. There, you know, we have communities to the north and south of us who have it significantly, uh, where, uh, even with an escalator, uh, you know, when water, uh, the price of water goes up 300%, it doesn't matter how much of an escalator you have, uh, that, that won't be sustainable over time. And so, um, I, I'd really like, at least my colleagues, to, to think about as we move forward, not, not losing that conversation about long-term planning for this, for this issue. And so, uh, I, I, I don't think that it can always come out of the general fund. I think, uh, we have to figure out how to do it. So, um, but, but thanks for staff, staff for explaining this on page three of the staff report for the public. Really, really good, um, graph that shows, uh, the fiscal year 2020-2021 and it shows everything kind of, uh, explained in, in just, you know, like I said, uh, uh, some boxes there. So take a, take a look at that and, uh, uh, you know, understand that it's, it's not always about, you know, not being able to spend money wisely, but it's just, you know, cost of services going up over time. And, uh, and that's what you see when you see the negatives. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to add one thing to what Richard said, just real quick. Yeah, I agree, Rich. You know, we're definitely, one of the things we've been looking at doing is, is trying to figure out another mechanism to, to fix this. And, uh, with all that's been going on, it's, it's obviously been pushed into the backseat a little longer than we thought. But, you know, but recently, we all did, we all came together and did something that really is, um, the start of a fix. And that was the new CFD that we just recently did. And I, I had someone who came forward and just said, you know, well, we're building all these houses and all these projects. And how is it fair that, you know, we're, you know, we're, you know, we're going to have all this more stuff. And so I, I'd explain to them about this CFD did. So, you know, we have started taking those measures, right, Rich? I mean, we have, we, we, we did that's a mechanism to try to, you know, stunt the bleeding going forward, um, at least for new stuff. And then now we just have to go back and try to fix what's broken, um, already that we already have. And so, um, and what Rich said, if you want information on these lighting landscapes, there is a good maps in the staff report. For those of you that are watching, if you go to the city website, city meetings, and then click, uh, the top, it's highlighted agenda and staff reports, and then click city council, and then the date, and then they're all in PDFs. Great maps, shows everything, a lot of information there. So go look for it if you want more information.
Thank you, Sean. Tina, any public comment out there?
No written public comment.
No, is any?
There are no hands raised on the attendee side.
So if nobody had no question, I would like to move that agenda. Tina, could you read the recommendation?
Resolutions declaring the city's assessment for fiscal year 2020 through 21 for the West Side Galt Lighting Landscaping Maintenance District 1990 dash 02, the Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District, and the Galt Landscaping and Lighting District Number Three respectively. And two, authorizing publication of public hearing notices and posting of the engineer's report for the three City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting Districts. And three, set August 4th, 2020 at 6:00 PM as the date and time for public hearings for all three districts.
Thank you. Now I will entertain the motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Uh, motion move by Councilmember Lamson, second by Councilmember Campion. Tina, may I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion carry five to zero. Thank you. Next agenda item, communication. Tina, any communication?
Just, we had one, uh, public comment come in after, uh, the meeting started. Alan King, I would like to have advance notice at least 14 days prior when the city council will be making decisions regarding our city and community.
Thank you. So the next agenda item is city clerks for, uh, Ms. Huber.
Okay, this item was asked to be brought back by city council. Uh, the recommendation is to review applications and consider appointments to the two vacant positions on the Measure R Independent Citizens Oversight Committee. The Measure R Independent Citizens Oversight Committee has two vacancies appointed by the entire city council with terms ending April 2023. At the June 16th, 2020 city council meeting, city council appointed Tony Laura and reappointed Tina Talamontes. City council advised staff to re-advertise for the remaining two vacant positions. This, the city clerk's office advertised the vacancies on the city's website and social media. One additional application was received after contacting the prior applicants to verify, uh, they still wanted their applicants, applications reviewed. One application was pulled. The two remaining applicants are Terry Cooley and Laurel Schamber. Their applications were attached and both applicants are on the line if you have any questions.
A correction, actually, they have disconnected from the attendee site, so they're no longer available online.
Okay.
I have, I have no questions. Um, I would, I would just like to know if there's any public comment on this. And if not, I'd like to move to approve both, uh, applicants.
I have no.
Written public comments.
I will do second. You know, maybe a roll call, what?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Hi. Motion pass for five to zero.
Since they did drop off the line, I will contact them individually to take their oath of office via Zoom.
Okay, thank you. A comment by staff, uh, city manager. Mr. Haglen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll start with, uh, Mike Selling. Do you have any comments?
Thanks, Tom. Um, actually, I don't tonight, so thank you very much, though.
Armando.
I would just like to thank my staff that, um, out at the market, the aquatic center and that are running our day camps right now. These are some, uh, pressing times and they're doing a great job working with the public. And I just want to let them know that I appreciated their efforts. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Chris Arias.
Two things real quick. I want to congratulate Dan Gerling on his appointment to the planning commission. I might, I'm looking forward to working with him. I've known Dan for, uh, some time and I think he'll do a great job. I wish I had more time to work with him, but, uh, I think we'll get a couple of meetings in. So, speaking of, speaking of, speaking of planning commission meetings, uh, we do have, I wanted to let the council know, we have a special planning commission meeting this Thursday to talk about the East Galt Infill, Simmerhorn Ranch, Notch Annexation Project. And the planning commission won't be making, uh, a formal decision on the project. Our hope is to just present the project to the commission and public and allow for question and answer. Then that project will come back to planning commission, uh, in August at their regular meeting. So, that's it.
Thank you. Claire.
I just want to thank council for their, um, acceptance of the, um, audited financials and we're moving on to the next year. And, uh, uh, thank you to staff for all their work on that.
I'll call on Amy and I will personally thank her for her quick reaction and work on this urgency ordinance that, uh, the council approved. Amy?
Thank you. Um, I appreciate that, but no, I have nothing more to add for this evening.
And, uh, so I think we lost the connection to Kimberly, so I'll call on Harriet Steiner. Harriet, any update from the city attorney's office?
Hi, there's no update. Kim really texted me and said that there was no update, but it is nice to see all of you again.
Thank you, Harriet. Tina?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay, our human resources director, Stephanie Van Stein.
Uh, yes, good evening. I just wanted to announce that we have, uh, posted the Community Development Director job opening. We hate to lose Chris Arias. Um, it's sad to see him go, but we have posted that position in. And the application deadline is August 25th, for anyone that's interested.
Thank you very much. And I think that concludes the, uh, staff comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Comment by city council member, Vice Mayor Lozano.
Uh, I, I'm not going to really have any comments tonight, um, other than to, uh, thank the staff and the community for doing whatever you can to, to help, uh, help with the crisis that's going on and, and we'll move forward. And, and, uh, hopefully in the near future, we'll be able to get back out and, and gather again. Uh, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Campion.
No additional comments.
Councilmember Lamson.
Yeah, no additional comments, except everyone stay safe and stay healthy and do our best to social distance and get this thing over with.
Councilmember Farmer.
Uh, yeah, just a brief comment. I just wanted to say congratulations to, uh, Dan Gerling and Laurel Schamber and Terry Cooley for their appointments. Hopefully you guys will serve us well. I'm, I'm sure you will. And also, um, just thanks to my fellow council members for passing the, uh, ordinance for the outside dining, to, you know, throw a lifeline to some of our struggling businesses in, in this tough time. So thanks, guys, for doing that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Again, I would like to thank you all, the staff doing the hard work, especially finance department, uh, bigger board. Thank you. We are proud to pass their report tonight. And I also understand this is a very hard time for so many members of our community, as well as our businesses. Let's continue to support one another and stay safe. If there is anybody have any question or any question, I believe all the council member keep ready to give you the answer at best of their ability. Thank you. If anybody have any question, if is not, I would like to adjourn the meeting. Adjourn the meeting.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.